Review and. Review the five proposals that were sent in by the consultants for the P O C D work that we sent an RFP out for. Hopefully, all of you have had a chance to go through each of them. There, you know, some are there similarities and there's also some decent differences between the two, between them. The. Glenn Schalder, who was our, I had asked this earlier, but Clint Schalder, who had helped us on our previous P O C D. Was sent the the package as well, and Sarah says that he just didn't respond. So we do not have a response from his firm and himself. But we do have five other proposals to go through. Sarah, do you want to, before we get to the meat of each of the proposals, do you want to talk about the goals of the P O C D? And the bullet items that you had included in that email?
Sure, um, so. You know, as you all may or likely aware, every ten years, it's mandated by state statute that we update. Our P O C D and there are twelve items that by statute we are required to review. Those include a community development action, action plan, if we have one. The need for affordable housing. Protection of existing and potential public surface and groundwater drinking supplies. The use of different types of development and if they're consistent with existing soil types, terrain and infrastructure in the municipality. We also have to incorporate the state plan of conservation and development, which I believe is running from twenty twenty to twenty thirty. We also have the regional plan of conservation and development, which would be West Cog, which is essentially all of Fairfield County. Physical, social, economic and governmental conditions and trends. Many needs of the municipality, you know, recreation, education, health, social services, infrastructure, transportation. Energy efficiency and how it relates to patterns of development, the use of solar as an example. Other types of renewable energy, protection and preservation of agriculture, sea level change scenarios. And the need for technology, infrastructure in the municipality. And I guess to start, I think. Of the four full. Proposals that we received, I think every single one is capable of giving us a plan that would meet the state statute requirement. It's just, you know, digging down into what works best for New Canaan and what we want to see out of everything.
And then you also sent around earlier today, you sent around a proposal comparison.
That is sitting here and I emailed it to. Anyone on Zoom. And so that's just, you know, assuming, you know, you all did have a chance to read it, but I know for myself, it got to be the same after a while. So it kind of just briefly breaks it up.
Now, this is very helpful.
And this has four out of the five in here?
Yes, I didn't include the partial one from the Fairfield County housing opportunities. I don't know if we want to address that one first to just. What worth? Thoughts on having a partial? Proposal.
This is the one from Center for Housing Opportunity?
So what I was gonna say on that one is. I mean, I think they offer some good services. Obviously, they wouldn't be able to complete. Everything that you just described that's required for the P O C D first. So for that reason, I'm not sure we can fully consider them for that now if. One of the consultants that we elected to work with wanted to partner with them, you know, I suppose that would be fine. The other thing that came to mind. Dan's aware of this, and I think some of the other people on this committee are aware of this, is that the town is working on an affordable housing. Commission committee that will probably be doing some like looking for a consultant to do some work for them. And so I thought that this proposal would be nice to hand over to them when they get up and up and running. Because I think this organization could provide services that they need.
I'm gonna ask a really crazy question. Dan, did you ever call the meeting to order and do you need to?
Oh, good point. I guess we should and take attendance. All right, let's backtrack a little bit. So this is the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Town of New Canaan. It is May tenth. Special meeting to discuss the P O C D. RFP responses as submitted by five different firms. In terms of attendance, again, he we have a special subcommittee consisting of. Five regular members and one alternate as well as Sarah helping to moderate and. Keep us online. In terms of attendance, I call myself Dan Radman here, Kristen Nielsen.
Here.
Art Casavat.
Here.
Chris Herring.
Here.
Kent Turner.
Here.
And. Tom, is Tom here?
Yep, Tom Benton's here.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Tom Benton as well. Thank you. And John Chris, who is not able to attend, he's traveling today, so he will. Moving forward, he will be there for the meetings and for the P O C D. Thank you, everyone. Jumping back into the discussion on the Center for Housing Opportunity and the. And their qualifications, I think you're spot on, Krista, in terms of what they can offer. This is not really, I don't think it's a global enough coverage of scope for the P O C D, but more focused on the. Affordable Housing Committee and Affordable Housing opponent that's going to be working in parallel with the O C D. Does anyone else have any? Comments on this particular proposal?
I'm familiar with the work of. The proposed organization and I totally agree that they won't be able to do a comprehensive review. With all the core data and integration. I mean, as we weigh them, they're a good organization, particularly on the affordable housing side, but.
Right? Why don't we, why don't we then table theirs, their proposal and pass that on to the Affordable Housing Committee? For their review and consideration in the future. We can move on to the other applicants. We have. All yours engineering design, we have Artistry in Hanover, we have B F J. Planning and we also have S L R. All of whom, their proposals, they have, well, different. Different price points on their as well, and that's something that Sarah's. Matrix that she circulated earlier today, you can see in here. I think that would be a good place to start, just in comparing them all. If you guys have the matrix in front of you. Between B F J, S L R, H and H and Greenwood.
One quick question, Dan, sorry. So I see in the the file under P and Z, we have the. U C D request for proposals online, but I wasn't sure if I had all of the the actual.
So none of this is posted online. It was all just emailed.
Email. Okay, perfect.
It was emailed back on. The twenty eighth or twenty ninth of February of April.
Okay, perfect. I just had an issue with my town email, so.
Another feeling. So. If we look at the matrix that Sarah put together, this is a really good little cheat sheet to go through the. Primary components of each response, background and experience providing services, municipality, similar in size and issues to be can. And so each one of them. B F J, they've done P O C Ds in Meriden, the village district in Norwalk, downtown master plan. Obviously, very. Very close neighboring towns and similar scope. S L R has done work for Salisbury on their zoning updates. Derby and their planning updates in the Southbury, Will and West P O C D. So again, qualified firm, similar work. All falls within we're looking for. H and H, Principal of the Project, work at a different firm in Westport and Darien that are being implemented. Firm as a whole, comprehensive plans in Westchester County. Who did they, who did the principal work for, Sarah?
Um, I'm not sure. It was. I don't remember off the top of my head. No, so he worked.
I haven't pulled up a look. He worked for a different consulting firm for a period of time.
When, when the Westport and Darien plants were created.
N V five, formerly the R B A group, I believe. I thought.
I think that they have gotten bought and out by Partisty and Hanover.
Right, so.
One suggestion from like a process of elimination is that the Greenwood Associates seem to, it seems to be the first three are quite qualified. From kind of looking at it in the fourth Greenwood Associate seems to be kind of a step down if I'm reading this matrix correctly, because it seems like. They just don't seem to measure up to the first three.
So they're, they're. They're at a lower price point. If you look at how many employees they have, it's about four total, whereas the other firms are hundreds of employees. So.
Yeah, that was the point I was gonna bring up in terms of, you know, what we want to consider tonight. You know, Greenwood Associates, I don't, I actually don't really know any of these firms, so I'm just having the same information you guys do, but. You know, some of these firms, most of these firms have substantial, a substantial bench to draw from in terms of resources inside of the firm. And I just didn't get that sense from the Greenwood Associates proposal that they had a lot of depth. In terms of, you know, if we decide we really want to go down a civil engineering route and look at our sewer system, you know, they're not going to have. Necessarily the people on staff, or if we get super into urban design and want to see some streetscape concepts, there may not have the people on staff, so. I I agree with you, Chris, that I think they don't offer the same sort of level of service as the other ones.
So we can move on from Greenwood Associates as long as everyone's in agreeance with that.
Well, I mean. We probably should talk about the scope of work. I mean, based on credentials and, you know, their bench. Yes, they are weak. There's no question about it. It looks like four people would be assigned to the project, two of them, the principals. That they also, they also teach. Unfortunately, we don't know anything about the workload right now and, you know, how they could attack this this project. So. You know, I think that staffing wise, they probably don't have enough people. They probably haven't worked together. It wasn't obvious in the proposals, so I don't even know how that team works. It appears that Greenwood would be the. Or excuse me, is it Mr. Wood would be. Would be the principal in charge and would manage Collier, which again, you know, I asked the question to. Does he have the time to do that? He's a very senior principal and partner in in his firm. So it's. You know, I do agree that they appear to be weak in several different categories, and I just wanted to add that. It's, it's not just staffing. I think it's scope of work, their project schedule. I didn't see the meeting dates and the deliverables seemed a little weak, so.
Also to clarify, you know, at the end of this meeting, if we aren't in a spot where we have a consensus, we can always. Hold interviews and I, or if we don't need that level of detail, I can always reach out to these consultants with certain questions to clarify things. So this. It seems for Greenwood, we have enough to determine that we want to move on, but you know, as we look through the others, if there's more information we want. We can ask for it before we.
Can I ask a question? It may seem a little crazy. Is there any reason to go back to? Childer and say, hey, guys, we're serious. Did you intend to not participate or you've already done that, Sarah?
I have not reached back out to him. I I figured first, let's see if the commission is content with what we have in front of us. And if we're not, then we could go that route, but I figured I'd wait and see.
I I think we might get into an issue of, we had a deadline for the RFP response, and if we don't honor that. We would have to give other firms an opportunity to maybe change their proposal and. Maybe some other consultants might come forward, so it might just be a little difficult to do that.
When also we did shout to Mr. Childer. He knew that this was out there, so it wasn't like he wasn't aware.
I'm fine with that, thank you. I was actually thinking that Kent might say, because Kent, I think, is the most involved of all of us. In the last version, he can't might suggest that we wouldn't do that. So if he does it, I'll table my comment entirely.
Yeah, I I personally feel it's, it's very unfortunate that he didn't respond.
So if the three, then if we're, if we're considering three, B F J, S L R and H and H, I think. Price point aside, and there is obviously a little difference here in the price point between some of them. Qualifications, you know, experience, depth of their bench, I think they all have those things. I think they each bring kind of a different angle to what they would offer us for a P O C D, and I think. To me, that's sort of the differentiation that this group should advise Sarah on. I see B F J is providing kind of an urban design and market analysis specialty. S L R looks like they are more focused on environmental engineering and H and H has a strong background in civil engineering. I think that Neil Desai, who was the principal that they were going to put in charge of the project, also had a pretty strong background in public engagement. So when I look at those three firms, again, price aside, and I think we need to address that piece as well, but. That's kind of how I parse them out as as being different from each other. I didn't find that their proposals for the work. Were substantially different, but I think that their areas of expertise are somewhat different. So I'd be interested in what this group thinks about. You know, what type of expertise would be most useful to us as we do this P O C D?
Well, I I think one thing that maybe since we're focusing a little bit on price. I think we need to better understand. The expenses, what's included and what's not. For example, on S L R, they don't identify any expenses. And I know that, I think it was H and H or maybe B F J where they actually did a line item for the expenses. And it was included in their final price, so. And then that gets into the scope part of it. What services are we getting and or not getting?
Sarah, can you speak to that? Because I know, I mean. There are some differences in price. Do you see difference in the services we're receiving for the same price?
So the only main difference I saw was that S L R specifically stated that every other week they would have a meeting with town staff. And no other firm clarified clarified how often updates would be given to staff to. Move the process along. They just, all the other firms just said, oh, we'll have six P O C D subcommittee meetings, and that's it. There was no any, no indication of how often, you know, I would or other town staff would be updated as we go along. Because, you know, only six subcommittee meetings, that's every other month in a year-long process, so be a long time to not know what's going on.
Well, I think, I think in order to. Better gauge or maybe refine their proposals, we should give them guidance on how often we want to meet. I don't think every other month is going to work, but I don't think every two weeks works either. I think, I don't think. Any one of these firms is going to produce enough work in two weeks to make it worthwhile to sit down with them.
So I mean, every two weeks would just be to update town staff specifically all, it was pretty uniform across every single proposal that the subcommittee. They they would meet with the subcommittee every other month, essentially. That was pretty standard. It was up. For us to decide what we wanted. So I will say, I think S L R's price may be explained because they're the only ones that reached out asking what our budget was, and so our. Our actual budget is about two hundred. I I told them one sixty-five, and so they came in at. I think that may be why their price is higher than the others, because they didn't ask what the budget was.
That being said, though, I was. I guess my heart was warmed when I saw, I think it was particularly H and H's proposal where they. Listed other projects they'd done of similar scope, other P O C Ds they'd done, and the budget was about a hundred thousand, which is what I think they. It did make me think, oh, we, you know, other places have gotten this done for a hundred thousand dollars, so. You know, maybe we don't have to spend a hundred and fifty to get something that we want. I mean, we could, but we don't have to, so, yeah. It is interesting, I guess.
The other, the other thing that is a little challenging to to understand is, you know, they they've. Provided hours, and I'll use H and H as an example. By task, by phase, but they don't indicate the individual, so. You know, if we want to do a. Oh, I take that back. I'm sorry. At the very top, it says loaded hourly rate. So the the that would be the hourly that we can determine how many. Unfortunately, we don't know. Again, who the individual is, this is a combination of, could be two people, could be four people, their average salary. So. That might be a question we want to ask.
Okay.
Get into the specifics, the individual, you know, the hours and their rate.
It does seem, I mean, just reviewing their work on their website too, it does seem like S L R has a pretty significant. You know, environmental and sort of. You know. Power-focused element, whereas it seems like. B F J, you know, has a pretty broad range of services, specifically in areas like. Things that we, I think the town council looked at recently with the the funds that were given to us, like sustainability and resiliency planning. With, you know, I think one of the things that come to mind now with, you know, the storms and and. The idea was that. I saw this in the H and H that, you know, Darien's there, we mentioned seawater raising and the idea of like, you know, planning on. Power being underground in certain regions or expansion of sewer, like that sort of infrastructure elements. Just seems to be really strong in the B F J and H and H. Book of Business, and I know a lot of that can be subcontracted too, but.
I'm sorry, what you think?
So I was thinking B F J seems to have quite, B F J and H and H seem to have. Quite a bit of both. I'd say town center planning mixed with. Resiliency planning, which seemed to be a.
It's important.
An important combination, especially as we look at kind of the affordable housing development and how we look at. Positioning that and the H and H community outreach also appealed to me. I I saw you called that out, Sarah. I know, given the consternation we've had in town on Grace Farms and the library and other proposals, I feel like. Having a sound approach to community engagement is very appealing.
Yeah, I did. I did note that I liked H and H's community engagement approach.
If if we stick to the community engagement, H and H, I think, had a good approach. It seemed a little old school in the sense that. What I liked about B F J was more the neighborhood groups. They were trying to get different populations together, so it wasn't just. Tabletop and people throwing out their comments. I felt like if we can widen it and have little groups, you get more ground swell. Which I thought was better with S L R and. B F J, I thought they had the best. More. Distributed community outreach, which I thought was good. Which I think is important for us. I think the community outreach is probably going to be the biggest thing for us to nail correctly.
Yeah.
So that I I looked at when I started to stack rank, those are the two that I put for neighborhood outreach is the best. And when I looked at P O the, P O C D expertise, I also put B F J. And S L R at the top. And then when the piece that I did not like with H and H is I thought their entire team was a bit new to the business, which means. They don't really know how to operate in the new company. I did not like that the average tenure was less than two years.
Yeah.
So to me, that was a a red flag, because it means we're going to have to manage them so they can manage their own firm.
So and most of their, and most of their experience was in New York.
Yes, yes. Well, so I think H and H was the one that had acquired a planning firm, Frederick Clark, that solely did work in New York State, and so I think. Yeah.
Frederick P. Clark and Associates. I remember those guys.
Yeah.
S L R also in twenty twenty acquired Malone and McBroom, who also was a large regional planning firm. I, before working in New Canaan, I worked in Derby and Malone and McBroom had done all of Derby's planning services and then S L R took it over. So you may also notice on S L Rs that there are a lot that have only have a year or so of experience and. Having been with Derby when the merger was happening. That, that's why, because there was a lot of.
Did they lose a lot of people?
No, I, a lot stayed and the the office that was proposed in our RFP. To be the main office of S L R to work on this project was the old Malone and McBroom office that got acquired. And I actually have personally worked with a few of the consultants that were in the proposal. Just as some extra background, and also I would just highlight with B F J, I I took the time to go through. Plans that all of the firms had referenced in their proposal, and I had some concerns about B F J's. Graphics, especially in the Meriden twenty twenty P O C D, their tables were clearly just done in Excel. On the default color schemes and it's just seemed.
One other item as far as H and H, if you look at the schedule that they've developed. It just seems very, very general. It's discovery, you know, it's. I I think it should have been a little more detailed and got into specifics about, you know, what are the tasks and what's the timeframe? And then also, you know, where are meetings, where are the. Information that gets distributed, et cetera. So I thought that was very light on their proposal.
Especially in terms of neighborhood engagement, I think we need a more clear understanding from each one of the firms. How many meetings do they foresee needing to have? If it is a back and forth process, right? It's not going to be a single meeting where we're going to get all the feedback that we want from the townspeople. And each one of these guys, having done P O C Ds for other other towns, is it a matter of? Two, three, five meetings, you know, what is, what are we looking at? Because that will inevitably also inform the timing of the. The discovery phase, right? Is it really going to be one or two months or is it going to drag on longer and and then? All of the other workload in terms of the scope of the P O C D pushes further out as well.
Yeah, do we have the opportunity to invite them to present?
I think that's the next step, actually. I think we should. Personally, I think we should, we're now talking about three out of the original five. I would be okay with all three coming in. If you want to narrow it down to two, we could do that as well. But I think we should have them all come in and then. Before they come in to do a present, a full formal presentation. Give them a list of questions and clarifications that we would be looking for from them to address during that presentation.
Yeah, that would be my, my desire would be for it to be very prescriptive. We want them to present about like, what's your answer to community outreach, so it doesn't get lost in thirty minutes of bios and backgrounds. I'd also love to see. P O C D best practice, if they take the best one they've done and have them represent what the approach was, because. I do worry the firm may have it, but if the folks we're working with have firsthand knowledge, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I think we, we need to be clear about how, how much time. Yeah, I think we, we need to be clear about how, how much time we're gonna allot each one of them, I would recommend half an hour to each firm. Um, and in that half hour, your point, Tom, we don't need a, you know, regurgitation of each one of the. Proposals with their, you know, qualifications of their, of their staff members, et cetera, we see all that, um, but rather. And you know, an abbreviated description of how effective they can be in terms of structuring a P O C D for us. And examples of what they've done in the past, successful examples of other P O C Ds. And then responses to any questions and comments that we may have had, um, they can easily do that within a half hour time span. I think that will give us a much better picture, um, for each one of these.
So having obviously worked in planning in the past and also doneing, having done a short stint, um, actually a couple of times in different consulting firms. And and those of you, I know architects work as consultants as well. It, they don't get paid for the time they spend putting in this R F P and they don't get paid, obviously, to come before us, so I think asking three firms. Each with a thirty-three percent chance of getting this contract, which is not probably in the grand scheme of things, a substantial contract. Um. You know, that's, I think that's asking a lot, I would, I would say if we can get it down to two, I think it's a fairer ask for them to spend additional time when they have a fifty fifty. Shot as opposed to a thirty-three percent chance.
That's fine, yep, that's fine.
Do you think doing it via Zoom is acceptable?
I think it would have to be Zoom, just given the distances of consultants.
And I think that would lower the cost for. One additional thing.
I I personally, I I personally disagree, I I think if they're eager and interested in the project, they're gonna show up, they don't have to necessarily show up with a full. Of of full team, they can send one or two representatives to make the presentation. But I think FaceTime with a particular applicant is is much more effective.
Well, to Kristen's point, you think with some clarifying questions, um, maybe based on these responses to the three. Let's call them semifinalists, um. Get it down to two so we could feel better inviting two versus three.
Yeah, no, I agree, going down to two is fine, I mean, it's not like they're that far, B F J is out of the New York City, that's most, most of their people are in New York City. Um, S L R, um, they are. Where's S L R's main office?
It's Ch- Cheshire is the one that.
Eric Cheshire, okay, so it's a half hour ride for them and and if if we choose H and H. I don't, I don't think that they're, they're far either.
They're in Rye, so no.
So we're not, we're not asking anything outrageous out of these firms. And if someone from New York City can't take this time to come make the presentation, then that makes me wonder if they're gonna put the time in to come up and meet with us. Every couple of months and do what they need to.
Yeah, honestly, I'd let them make the decision, you know, I'd ask all three, if you're gonna take and assemble our group to hear things. I'd ask all three to come and, you know, that's a cost, their cost of doing business and.
Yep.
I think the importance of doing it in person, even though I'm not on this committee, is huge because the issues that we're gonna come up with, what we learned last year, right? Was that we probably should have gotten more input on some of our community input, we have to have a really good sense of how these folks will do that. Right, and where they're gonna do it and. I think actually seeing people in person is hugely valuable.
I agree.
I I also agree, it's um, the great opportunity to meet the project manager, principal in charge. And, um, you know, you get get a better feeling as far as the chemistry, you know, you, the the, this is gonna be the person that we're, the main. Person we're work, we're, we are working with, so I think it's important that we have that opportunity to. Make sure that this person is compatible with um, our committee.
So do you guys feel that they have to meet with the P O C D subcommittee or can they meet with staff?
P O C subcommittee.
So Dan. Uh, I think, I don't, I don't know if I missed this because I was a few minutes late, but have we had a conversation with the subcommittee about what role this group? Plays. Meaning, here's, I'll just give my opinion and then you tell me if we've already talked about this and we don't need to talk about it, but in my opinion, staff. Will be managing this consultant and the P O C D subcommittee is giving feedback to staff on what direction we want to go in. So taking them in and have them interview before committee. And to be trying to make a decision by committee, I think is going to make this process slower.
I think that's the whole purpose of this subcommittee is to evaluate these applicants, provide feedback and as a, as a committee, select who we're gonna go, go forward with. Once we make that selection, then it will be up to staff to manage that consultant, bring them in, provide feedback and and schedule them for all the appropriate meetings. But up until we select a consultant, I think it's absolutely the part of the commission to, or the subcommittee to, to. Be engaged, be part of it and and review each one of these applicants.
Okay.
So one, one thing that I I wanted to table, just as we discuss these, um. Applications, one thing that. And I wanna, I don't want to have this taken as any sort of slight at our previous P O C D, but um, you know, we ran into. To areas of of. Of, let's call it vagueness, um, for lack of a better phrase, and I I don't think it was intentional, but I think as the. As the focus of the town evolved over ten years, there are certain areas of the, the P O C D that that seem to lack. You know, guidance, let's call it, um. And so, one of the things that that I didn't see in the proposals as I looked at, and I admit I didn't look. As detailed as everyone else, just to be clear, but I didn't see, um. Any commentary as to how the planning process has evolved in Connecticut or evolved in. You know, the, the nation writ large and how. You know, one of the things that I always look at. In interviewing is, is whether people can kind of have the self-awareness to understand when they failed and when they've succeeded. And so, like, one of the questions that I would pursue is, you know, can you point out? A risk that you took in a given plan to focus on a given area that turned out to be prescient, um, whereas other situations where you. You know, did the standard. You know, traffic design, but it turned out not to incorporate flood, you know, for example, something that was. You know, maybe predictable, but maybe not, so I guess I'd be interested in understanding that the, this subcommittee's point of view as to. How sort of. Adaptable these different firms are in terms of looking at. Uh, the different dynamics of of the town, you know, whether it be demographic changes, whether it be, you know, investments in different core areas, whether it be utilities, et cetera. Um. Affordable housing.
I think that's a perfect question to. Send to each one of them and have them address it when they come before us.
A- as an additional question, by the way, I would be intrigued to know. What amount of time each of the firms has spent in Hartford? Um, you know, for example, the New York firm qualifications are intriguing, but. Are they gonna be New York centric or Connecticut centric?
Yep. So you're, you're thinking, um. Art, in terms of just the. The political awareness and and sort of the, the political headwinds or or tailwinds that might exist and.
Yeah, I mean, the eight thirty G issue, Chris, that you just raised is, is critical, I mean, I, I almost think. A subpart of this plan and we could even add it a- as a. Efficiency is what would be your alternatives? To deal with the eight thirty G challenges, sort of like the W E S C O group is looking at, because if our. Current pace goes forward and we're, you know, even if. The variety of outstanding applications are, are. Subsequently built, we, we still have a gap against. Eight thirty G and to not ask a P O C D. Consultant to assess alternative strategies as part of this, I think is, uh, you know, we should do that. I know there are twelve required elements, I'd add a thirteen.
I, I don't disagree, Art, I think we should do it, I think we will need to be mindful of the depth. That we go into on that subject because as we both know, you could go down a deep rabbit hole and write an entire plan. As we already have done about affordable housing and then you could elaborate, elaborate on it ten times over, um, so, you know, I don't. Don't think we need to, or we should get mired down in that because hopefully there is an affordable housing committee that's going to. Deal with the bulk of it, but I think, yes, we should definitely discuss it in this plan. So I'm confused, are we trying to narrow it down to two or are we sticking with three? My vote is to narrow it to two.
Let's take a vote.
Well, I guess I, I would, I would split the difference a little bit, but maybe. Aimed to narrow it to two with, with some, some qualifying questionnaires back to them before the proposal, like, my thought would be, okay. We decide on some questions that we think are not addressed in these proposals, shoot that back to them, they come back and give us. You know, they're good or bad answers and based on those answers, we say, well, you know, you've been down selected or you haven't.
Um, I can live with that.
Before we bring them in, Chris?
That, that was, that was a, that was a, a potential proposal, yeah, Dan, so that we, we, we kind of come up with some. Questions that we feel are unanswered by the R F Ps here and say, hey, you've been down selected to the semifinalists, but before we. Bring you in, um, we have some qualifying questions that we'd like you to, you're asked to. To make us feel like we're. We're investing each of our time appropriately.
I think that would help us with the financial bit of. S L R, because we can ask them to justify the expense and see if they can come down between now and then.
Yeah, we could do that to all three of the remaining firms. And then from the responses that we get on that, it then narrowed it down to two to bring in and talk to.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, so I started writing down some of the questions that I thought I heard us wanting to ask, one was. Talking about. I don't know if I captured it properly, Chris, um, sort of. Times when you've tried things and maybe they didn't work out the way you thought, or maybe they worked out better than you thought, that. Type of line of questioning.
Yep, yep, like kind of the risks that you've taken or the areas that you, you, that you, that you dove into deeper than maybe. The bare minimum required and then, you know, found that that was an area that turned out to be much more relevant. You know, five years down. The line.
Yeah, lessons learned.
Okay. Um, and then the second one I wrote down was sort of their experience with the political climate in Connecticut relating to planning. And the legislature in Hartford.
Mm-hmm.
And then the third thing I just wrote down was justifying their expenses. Which isn't really a question, it's.
Going, going back to that first one, just to maybe make it a two-part question would be, you know, how has your approach to these P O C Ds changed over the last ten to fifteen years?
Okay.
And what emphasis have changed? Because I, I think that might. If they go ahead and say something of the effect of. Nothing's changed, like that isn't all that impressive to me. I doubt they would, but it would just be interesting to see what they, what they say to that effect. Because I think we, we want some critical thinkers that.
Well, and I will say, I mean. I, I can't say I was disappointed, but I don't think any of them really went super far outside of the box in terms of what they responded with and. Again, I think that's probably just a time and money issue that they're not gonna really solve all of our problems in a. R F P, um, but.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not a big project in that sense, correct.
Okay, so what other questions do we have, I mean, I.
I would, I would ask them to go deeper on community outreach best practices, lessons learned and what their proposed approach is for us.
This is not sort of market-based, but it's, I always ask this sometimes, like, if we were to give them twenty-five percent more budget, where would they spend it? In the proposal, because what I heard Sarah say is that we have a two hundred thousand dollar budget, I have, no one's watching this recorded meeting, that's. But, um.
Public information.
Yeah, um, and. Many of them came in at the half of that, so, you know, potentially, I don't want to leave money on the table either way, if they have other areas, they think that. We're being, you know, foolish not to explore, it'd be interesting to understand this.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, and I, I think they anticipate before they finalize their scope of work, that there's gonna be this discussion with us and, uh. That, uh, the scope will probably be increased and, um, you know, they will fine tune their, their fee.
Right, like if we went back and said, you know what, we do want bi, we want everyone to offer bi-weekly meetings with the planner, well, then the ones that are seventy-eight thousand might become ninety-nine thousand.
So these are all questions that we want to send out before we even get to. So then. I guess we need to think about timeline a bit, we, the clock is ticking, um. So obviously, I could, I mean, I can send this out tomorrow, you know, like I can get on this quickly, but. When are we having another meeting to interview them, we now, you know, have to coordinate.
Well, is, is June one absolute?
So it was, um. The funds need to be encumbered by July one and I, we have to go back to Board of Finance to basically move the funds over. So we don't lose out on them and I've talked to finance and it should be fine, there's just concern that because. We don't have a contract signed, is B O F gonna ask questions? You know.
Sure.
Well, B O F should ask questions and we should tell them that we not only need adequate funding, but we need a comprehensive review. Of the implications for affordable housing. In our town as well as energy and sus- environmental sustainability, which are the critical things we have to deal with, right? And if they need a contract, let's pick one and sign it, you know.
But I, I think we can go in parallel, if we're gonna have two vendors, they can send their. Their contracts in ahead of time, we can start looking through those, I mean, the so, the S O W is the only thing that may change between the presentation, the contract, but. The rest of it, yeah, stuff we should be able to go through.
Yeah, I mean, doesn't, doesn't B O F basically approve a lot of things based on like proposals and contingencies based on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, it.
They approve, they approve, they approve a lot of things on the back of a napkin too, I mean, they approve things. Yeah, don't get me started, please.
I, I think there's gonna be can, particular concern after what happened with the, um. You know, the, the overrun on cost at the, um, building downtown, the cinema, so I, I think.
Understood, but in terms of this particular proposal, we have, we're, we're talking about trying to narrow it down to. Uh, to, let's say, within the next few weeks, um, ideally, um, we could take the higher of the two proposals. Add a ten percent contingency, ten percent contingency to that proposal number and, um, submit that to B O F with a not to exceed. Condition on that without ever having a contract. We can submit both proposals to B O, B O F for their review and then. They could, um, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but they could assign the money to the, to allow us to. Retain those services, even if the contract isn't signed by July first.
Yeah, and I mean, again, I, I talked to finance about it and it, you know, we, we discussed if we don't have a contract signed in time and. It, it should be fine, that was just what the urgency was, um, the last time I had spoken to you all about it, but I mean. You know, in a perfect world, July one, we have a contract signed, but it's not a drop dead date, at the end of the day, we need to have an adopted P O C D by. December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, we probably want fourteen months to be safe.
Yep.
Have time, but. Yeah.
Yeah, I.
So would this group, ideally, you'd meet again by the end of May, beginning of June, try, try and.
I, my. I, I think a possible way to solve this is that we. Get the questions out to the applicants, uh, in the next, say. By Monday or by midweek next week, uh, whatever, or, or sooner. Uh, have them respond, give them one week to respond. Get those responses back in front of all of the, um, people on this commission, on this committee. Uh, for review and discussion prior to our May twenty-third hearing. Um, and then we tack on an extra fifteen to twenty minutes at the end of that hearing, just to discuss the responses. And make a decision on which two firms to bring in. And then the early June meeting, uh, the, let's call it the regular meeting of the. P O C D subcommittee could be. Uh, and I'm making it up, let's say it's June tenth or June fifteenth or whatever it is. That could be the meeting date that we have the remaining two candidates come in, make the presentations and. We could either probably vote on it, maybe at the end of that night or by the. Uh, conclusion of the meeting, uh, the regular meeting of the June, end of June. That would give us some time to sign a contract and have someone on board by July first.
Sarah, does that work?
Uh, yeah, so the, um. The, I guess, quote unquote, regular, um, P O C D subcommittee meeting would be, um, the second Wednesday of the month, so June fourteenth. Would be, um. Yeah. I mean, I have to check Board of Selectmen, um, dates because we, we can't technically sign a contract till Board of Selectmen approves it, um. But it, it should be fine. Yeah.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with that process?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. Like having a, a week plus to respond to those questions is reasonable and.
Yeah. Can I put that back? Make sure I have it. So the 23 regular meeting will narrow it to the shortlist of two. Okay. And then we're giving them roughly three weeks to prepare because we'd have them present on the 14th. And then we, we take that information, vote on it on the on the 14th, or we do it at the end of June on the 20, what is it, the 27th?
Yeah, I think if we're, if it's going to come down to two, um, we can agree on it tonight. How long of a, um, presentation we're going to give them? Is it half an hour? Is it 45 minutes? Is it an hour? Maybe half an hour isn't enough, maybe 45 minutes each is better, you know, with a quick break in between. Um, that'll give us, you know, get it done in an, in an hour and a half to two hours and then have them leave and we can discuss it and then pick one after that.
Yep.
And are we going to give the consultants the option to be hybrid and let them choose what to do? May or may not be telling, or are we requiring that they be in person? Or just tell them it's hybrid and have them choose at their discretion?
I'm, my opinion, I think they shouldn't be required to show up. I've, I've done this so many times in, in my lifetime doing architectural presentations. And if, if someone, if a town or a client is asking me to show up or, or giving me an option to be hybrid, I, I would always be there in person. Uh, it shows a level of responsibility and dedication to the project and commitment to the integrity of their presentation. If they're willing to do it via Zoom, they, so be it. That's going to weigh on, on the, you know, on the level of acceptance of what their presentation is. There's, there's something to be said about, you know, one-on-one in-person chemistry with the applicant we're going to be working with for the next year. And I personally, I sure as hell don't want to do that over Zoom.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree. And you're not saying, Dan, that everyone on the project team necessarily has to be in the room.
No, 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 not at all. No.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be one person typically, typically a firm, uh, you know, firms like this will bring two, maybe three people to the presentation. Uh, principal, uh, components, project managers, planners that will be speaking to the, the, the brunt of the work that's going to be going on. Um, most importantly, we'll want to have whoever their project manager is that they're going to have in charge of the community engagement to the, talk to, um, you know, to talk to how they're going to put that together, how would, how long it's going to last, how it's going to be structured. Um, they're probably the principal of the firm or someone, you know, uh, on the executive level will show up and be a third person, but probably not.
There's one other question I have is, um, while we wait to get responses back from them for the initial questions, would you all like me to reach out to their references for other town staff to get feedback on, um?
Yes.
How working with, and I'll include that.
For those three, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Okay.
Yeah. There's a few of them. Krista, you sent me a list, but some of the, um, excuse me, some of the other towns, um, neighboring towns have already worked with a couple of these firms. So your list, yeah, for example, SLR, um, uh, Wilton's experience with SLR, Westport's experience with H and H, uh, or specifically Neil Desai, who is with H and H now, and Greenwich's experience with B F J. Um, um, I, I have a meeting with the other, um, planning and zoning chairs tomorrow afternoon to talk about, uh, the ongoing fair share issues. And I can touch on that subject with them and reach out to them directly, email and get feedback from them.
Okay. If you could, um, talk to Wilton's chair, Dan, about B F J, they're working with them currently. So.
Perfect, yeah.
To hear that.
Can, can I, um, you mentioned that you'd reviewed some plans that, um, can you just circulate those with our team?
Um.
Here, just curious, I didn't, I see some of them like on H and A, there's an awesome and comprehensive plan, but I wasn't sure if that was what you were thinking of or.
Sure. So I'm just, so everyone knows and I can send them out for, um, B F J, I went through Meriden's 2020, um, P O C D and they're currently wo- working on Wilton's downtown master plan. Those are all drafts for Wilton. So I, I read those for SLR. I read, um, Weston and Southbury's P O C Ds. Um, and then H and H, I read Mamaroneck's, um, comprehensive plan, which they're still currently working on. So I can circulate that to everyone.
Yeah, that would be good to see. And, and obviously everyone take it with a grain of salt when you're talking about certain towns like Southbury, Connecticut or Rye or, um, uh, any of these larger towns that are a completely different scale of, of, um, commercial and retail based than what we have and, um, scale of development. Um, we just want to be certain that we're picking a firm that is familiar with and sensitive to the, the type of development we're looking to address within our town. Uh, the last thing anyone, uh, of us want is someone to be, you know, trying to steer our P O C D to something that Southbury has done because, you know, it's strip mall city.
Guys, thank you very much. I know I'm an interloper into this one. I have to jump off, but thank you for, uh, this discussion. Very helpful.
Sorry.
Right. Um, so are those four questions? And I mean, I don't want to overload them with questions. I think four questions is plenty, but if there are any additional questions.
I have.
Five.
We have five slash six random.
I think, uh, the, uh, is one of the questions you've got right now, a better breakdown on their fee structure?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's it. That's, that's fine.
You can know the thing that is important is the, uh, have them define their workload. What are they currently, what projects are they currently working on?
Yeah.
The individuals that are working on it, that are, they're proposing for this team. When will the project end? And are they really available to start? I thought it was the second week of June. Sounds like second week of July now, but.
Yeah. And I think part of that, I mean, part of what you're going after, I think there is like the risk, you know, model, like what, what's at risk with this plan, whether it be people, you know, timing.
Right.
Whatever.
We, we don't want them to have to substitute somebody that they've put forward. Is there, you know, one of the key?
Correct, correct. Yep.
Because they're not available.
Everyone, I'm going to have to leave you. I have to board a plane. Sorry. They'll have to leave early, but, um, fill me in on whatever I miss. Okay?
Thank you. Thanks for hosting from, uh, from the Delta lounge.
Sorry.
I said, thank you for hosting from the Delta lounge or.
Exactly where I am. Take care, everyone.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
And then the other one was on the form of agreement. We're, we're going to ask them to propose something.
I don't, I would assume the town might, do we have a standard contract?
No.
Standard. Okay. So we've signed the con- consultant's contract. We don't make them sign our contract. Got it. Okay. Well then, yeah, we could ask them for their standard.
Just a example.
Do we have anything? And this is, I'm, I'm really kind of reaching in different directions here, but, um, you know, I didn't see anything in the proposals on economic funding, um, strategies. And what I mean by that is, um, you know, there are all sorts of kind of crazy, uh, things that we, that we've seen in municipalities, whether it be today, we have the Affordable Housing Fund that is part of our, our, our applications. That when I got a building permit, I needed to put money into that. And so, um.
And you happily did that, right?
And I happily did that. Say a large amount of money, just to be clear, um, more than I would have paid in any other Fairfield County town. Um, but I also think about, you know, uh, I'm looking at Chris here in the room, um, who's involved in many areas of town, whether it be Wave and Sea Conservancy or, or, um, conservation or land trust. And I'm thinking about, you know, is it out of scope to have them discuss funding and sort of reasonable practices and sort of expectation setting at the board level, BOF level, town level as to how you know, allocations to tree planting. I know that for example, we had a tree cutting budget, but no tree planting budget. And, um, you know, things, that's a very miniscule task oriented one, but I'm just thinking about whether there are any sort of.
Are you talking about sources of funding or uses of funding or both?
Well, I think, I think both. I mean, and I don't, I, this is why I'm questioning the concept because I don't know if that's out of scope or typical P O C Ds, whether they get into the notion of you can't have an effective plan without realistic funding sources.
Well, I think, doesn't it get into the implementation?
Yeah, I was going to say, that's part of the implementation piece. Like, so I, in my opinion, the plan will set the policy of what it is that we're hoping to achieve as a town. And then you get to the implementation and, and the previous one, which you've probably seen, we had a separate document and implementation plan where then you talk about, okay, what things actually have to happen in order for us to achieve these policies and the financing piece is obviously one of them.
So is that, so I apologize for my naivety. Is that implementation plan part of the scope or is that something that our town puts together separately?
So it's, it's part of the scope.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
They would make recommendations. But obviously they'd have to be guided. They, I don't know where the source of fundings are in our town.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't have the old, the 2014 P O C D in front of me. I mean, they would probably not be super specific. They would say, you know, you should be funding street trees or whatever you decide one of your goals is, but they may not say, well, funding for street, street trees should come from the general fund or you should have a special fund, you know, like those sort of financial decisions, I'm assuming they'd leave up to the town, but they would probably point out that someone needs to figure out.
Yeah, no, the, um, the 2014 P O C D, um, their implementation strategy, really the most detailed it gets is timelines in like two to five year increments of, we should achieve this goal by 2018 or whatever that was as specific as they got.
Very general.
By your description, you don't think that's specific enough? That doesn't seem all that helpful.
Well, it's, you need, you need a way of accomplishing it besides the timeline, you know, what's, resources are necessary. How are you going to accomplish it?
I think it partially was not as, um, I guess it, it wasn't implemented as strongly as it could have been in 2014, um, for various reasons, but I think, you know, in, in a town like New Canaan, if we have a goal, we can just ask for the money from BOF or Town Council. And from what I've seen, you know, they find it is my only. Moment.
Seems less more haphazard than it could be though. Okay.
It's not mandated by state statute to think about that. And it's also not listed as something that you could consider if you want to. I don't think, you know, it'd be any sort of violation or be frowned upon to do that. But it's, I don't think it's typical to be in the scope, but I don't think it would be weakness to have that.
Well, I've just, having sat on some Board of Finance and Town Council meetings, sometimes I feel like having some stakes in the ground as to what other towns have done or different funding sources being typical may help those deliberators.
Uh huh.
At least know that, hey, having a fund earmarked for land conservation or having a fee structure on top of building permits for the, as we do for the affordable housing is, is a, is one strategy that is established out there. I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I agree with everything you're saying. I just think it's a little further down the line in the process. Like as we identify what the priorities and the policy is, then eventually, yes, we need to get down to the brass tacks of how do we accomplish this? Where does the money come from? Who's in charge of doing it? And I think that is a more robust conversation that has to happen in the implementation plan. Implementation plan of, is part of the scope, um, but I don't, you know, we can't answer those questions now. We can't expect them to answer the questions because they haven't done the work.
No, I mean, I guess, I guess where I was going with this is sometimes you meet planners and, and other folks who don't have, like they have a lot of deep environmental and, and planning experience, but they don't necessarily have the, I don't know, uh, without sounding like they, they can come across a little naive as far as like the realpolitik of, of town, of town sort of deliberations. So I would be interested in whether one of these organizations had kind of the, the chops or whatever you want to call it, you know, to kind of think about what an implementation plan needs to have to be.
So I mean, I think one of, maybe what you're asking and one of the questions we could ask is we were going to ask about best practices and community outreach. We could also ask about their experience and best practices and implementation plans and how we actually turn this plan into reality.
Yep. I guess, uh, I think that's a good question. It, it's just, um, how many do we want to throw at them as we just try to narrow it down to three? Because we.
I don't think 10 questions is all that crazy. I mean, I think they can bang out, you know, 10 paragraphs pretty quickly, you know?
That, that's fair. I'm just.
I, yeah, I wouldn't want to exceed 10. I was hoping to stick to five, but we may be able to.
And, and some, and some of these we can hold to the presentation because I'm not sure some of these will be enough to make a decision off of. But that we're going to want to at least to get from three to two. But we're going to need it to get from two to one. So some of these, I think we can hold to the presentation. Others we need to.
Like I would probably hold the one about, uh, their familiarity with the political climate in Hartford to the presentations because.
Yeah, we need a couple of surprises to.
Well, if they're watching this meeting, they will.
I hope they're watching. Yeah. You should send them the video. Can we take any public feedback today's meeting?
Not for the.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, um, you can.
Yeah. I mean, norm, I guess I'd be up to the chair. I'm not sure who the chair is at this moment. I am the chair. Okay. Um, well, since there is only one person in the room who would like to comment, I will grant you that opportunity. Could you come to the podium though? Yeah. Cause we're on air or yeah, wherever you can speak in a microphone. Yeah, yeah. As long as a microphone.
And just, um, identify yourself and your position that you hold.
My name's Chris Shipper. I'm a, uh, 20-plus year resident of New Canaan. I live in a small antique at the top of Ferris Hill Road. I chair the Conservation Commission. I'm past president of the Land Trust. I'm founding board member of the Wavine Park Conservancy. I'm now a board member of the New Canaan Community Foundation and I help manage, uh, the Friends of Bristol Park. I've been involved in conservation in New Canaan for over 10 years. And I completely missed the opportunity to influence the 2014 uh, Plan of Conservation and Development, but I studied it a lot. And I studied the 2004, uh, plan as well. And I, I definitely felt like the 2004 plan was better constructed and put together than the 2014. If I have a, a big concern of the 2014 plan is it lacks quantification. It spends its time in platitude, but it doesn't quantify anything. It doesn't say how much stormwater run through we have or how much sewage we have or how many acres we have of this or that, or where things are. It has some great plan metrics maps, but it doesn't quantify beyond that to state, you know, if, you know, exactly, you know, how many units or how many trees are taken out every year, how many trees are remaining or, or woodlands and what have you. So I'd love to see the quantification aspect of that dialed up a little bit. Um, recycling is good, but they never give a number of how much tonnage is going through our transfer station. And what should, you know, what, what are the trends in that? Or it doesn't take a look at water consumption for the town in the Canaan or electrical consumption, which is, you know, we have one electrical service provider. You could say, how many kilowatts are you throwing into New Canaan? And how has that grown or changed over time? There's, there's an opportunity to be, um, more data driven. And particularly with your point, Chris, which is if, if, if we're going to look for financial support for programs, it can only be based on data. You'd have to say in order to reduce the transfer station loads by 10%, we'd have to increase recycling or food scrap or something like that to arrive at these numbers. And there, here's where you would invest to do it. I, I'm particularly fond of, um, and I, and I, and I will come down on this, which is I'm a, I'm on the conservation side of the planning and development. I'm not plant, I'm not conservation or development. I believe you can do both. I'm not, the tyranny of ore bothers me a lot. You can, you can conserve and develop, uh, doing it thoughtfully. Um, but I always felt it's conservation light, the plan. And when you look at how the town spends its money, it's 95% development, uh, 5% conservation. So despite what we say, it looks like it's evenly balanced, but it's not. Uh, it, it is a concern. Um, I personally, uh, uh, would love to see some very good in-depth analysis of the open space and the remaining open space in our town and the need and. Um, I personally uh would love to see some very good in-depth analysis of the open space and remaining open space in our town and the need and and the value of open space. Um, the 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 standard dismissal is, well, if you make it open space, it comes off the tax rolls. And the and the the knee jerk response is, well, so open space is bad. Uh, and I always point out to people that when you develop open space. There is a revenue side, but there's a cost side to every parcel you put up. Um, out there and and the open space itself adds value to the surrounding or the proximity properties as well. Look at how. Mead Park and Bristol Park add value to the center of town. Um. So I would definitely be very interested in in the the conservation chops of the group that you choose. Uh, in 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 looking at them and and seeing what they do, because the data is so much richer now. The ability to use the G I S is so much more powerful. That you can really layer out and and um, the Conservation Commission four years ago did an open space map and detailed and then prioritized. Said, these are the highest value properties to the lowest. And lo and behold, the highest value property was the aquarium property down off Indian Waters Drive, and the town had no position. To potentially preserve any portion of it. And that property has now gone to a private developer who paid a a modest hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre for land in New Canaan. That's like conservation. You know, conservations could pay that kind of money, but there was no town support for it. Um, so I I would argue that uh there has to be some funding mechanisms. It won't surprise you that I was in front of the Board of Finance last night making that same case. So. Um. I would say, and I do also like the idea of community groups when you mentioned focus, not just. Town hall, everybody come in and tell us what you think of the plan of conservation. I think that there is a group of people. Already out there in the conservation corridor. Garden Club, Planet New Canaan, Gardeners, Beautification League, Nature Center, Wavine Park Conservancy, Land Trust, that you could. Mobilize that group to put forward ideas and have them present a position. As well as are there, there will be other groups that you will uh address. So I think that's a great. Uh, opportunity for points to come across. Um. I do think the implementation side is 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 good. But it's never read as much as the plan itself. It's never really drawn to. Uh, and it's tough because it's a ten year plan and and you're. Planning and zoning board with one or two exceptions turns over on average three, every three years or something like that. So. Um, uh, keeping the tenure is is always a challenge, at least at at least keeping a tenure from start to finish, ten year run, that's really hard. Um. I uh. I view this as as the single most important document that the town produces for a ten year cycle. So obviously, uh. Um, and and I'm hopeful that there will be a. A a kind of a data like or a more precise. Indication of what the, what what is possible or isn't possible and how you change things that could be introduced into the plan. So. Um, it's sort of, I'm at a generic level, but I think that there are great opportunities here. And I personally and and the entire Conservation Commission. Are actively interested in in understanding where we're going to take the conservation side of the plan. And respect entirely the challenges that you face, affordable housing, development, uh, infrastructure and what have you. Um, but we want to be the. End player, not the ore player. So. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great comments.
Cheers.
Um. Yeah, to that point, Sarah, can we talk about data for a minute? Because I I do think that's an important piece. Um, and which were the firm, one of the firms was partnering with Time Bond, which currently.
B F J. It was B F J. They're they're partnering with Time Bond, who hosts our G I S, um. All of our data. I, if if we need something, we have to email Time Bond for it because like we don't even host it. Um, so that is definitely a big pro and um. I don't have any complaints about Time Bond. They um, they're very responsive. We've we've had a couple of issues with the zoning map and in. An hour, they've fixed what issues we've had. So from that data perspective, it's very simple. Um. But again, my concern with B F J is their communication of data. Um. I just wasn't impressed with it. I thought it was something I could do for the town, you know, without spending an extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know.
Right. I'm just, um. So if we don't go with B F J, I'm want to make sure that. All of our consult, you know, whoever the consultant ends up being has access to.
Of course.
All of the data, and not that, obviously, that would be our intention. I just don't know how hard it is. To kind of gather together the data because, you know, that is at the heart of making a good plan is knowing where you are now. You can't. Know where you want to go if you don't know where you've been or where you are. Um, and sometimes I personally find it hard on our website and other. You know, things that I'm doing around town, trying to figure out where is the actual information. So, um.
I. That's a challenge, I think, regardless, you know, like I've I've had times where I've needed to give the state information about the number of affordable. Units we have in town and there is no master list for how many affordable units, you know, it's always. There's a lot of piecemealing across the board with all data.
No, so is that a question? I don't know if that's a question we asked before in the meeting, but is that a. Category of information we're looking for from these consultants? Like, how do you operate? And help us with a more quantitative data driven plan? Sort of in the absence of a central repository for data? Like, what's your experience in that? And how have you managed that in the past? And how will you help us through this process?
I think that would be helpful. Um, I would assume that this is a problem across most towns in Connecticut, so it shouldn't be a unique issue for them. So I think. It would be helpful to see how they address it and hopefully. Um, create a clearer picture. I guess, is that something we want in the email round or the?
I would love to. I'd love to see that in the interview round. If they were to present and say, this is the data we've collected for the other ones. So there's probably a lot of questions we don't know to ask it. If they can present the data tables they've built for other P O C Ds.
Okay.
Then we can at least have a baseline from what they've done, and then we can add to it.
I mean, don't you think I I just. I mean, I respect your comment about like surprising them with certain things during the interview round, but but I I do think with something like data. I mean, to a certain degree, I want them to be as prepared as possible. So like.
Of course, yeah.
Um, I mean, if we say, all right, we'd like these five questions, and then in the interview round, these are some topics that we'll probably drill into further. And then at least. You know, for example, something like. The economic and social cost of development, like, you know, I think sometimes one of the things that. I wrestle with is, and we did this a lot with our affordable housing is, you know, what is the lesser evil? Like, for example. Okay, what is the cost of nine incremental units? What is the value of that versus the conservation of one acre of wetland? And like. There are economic equations to this. This is what, you know, people do. They they go out and say, all right, the economic value of. Having a downtown with a train station drives the the real estate in New Canaan to be X percent more valuable than the real estate in Wilton. Like, that's probably. Discernible. And so. I could, even if it's not necessarily. You know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there's probably a factor. Where it's going ahead and saying. You know, this is that. Um. And that does. Take some creative thinking, like that does take some sort of. Like socioeconomic. Point of view. Um. So I guess all I'm saying is that. Not necessarily putting that in the questionnaire, but giving them a bit of a heads up, like this is a direction that we may go. Um, be prepared.
I mean, my my assumption is, um, I think the best way to manage it would be. You know, after we review and we get down to two to, you know, when we say, hey, we would like you to come in for the interview, obviously, give them a warning in the first email that. We may want them to come in for an interview and tell them the date so they can plan ahead. But I think, you know, in that second, hey, yeah, we want to bring you back. I think we do need to be pretty specific in what.
Yeah.
We're gonna ask them. So I don't know if we need to give them a heads up in that first email. Hey, we're.
I mean, I don't, I don't care, I guess. I I think it'd be good to share more, but uh, if you guys want to keep it tight, that's okay by me.
Yeah, I just don't want to just, I don't want people to get disillusioned with us, and I don't want them to feel like we're dragging this on and on. Like, I think is. The more that we can have a tight process and we're gonna do this, and then we're gonna ask that, and then we're gonna make a decision like. I think they'll be. Will be more inclined to get consultants that want to engage with us, whereas if we're like, oh, now we have six more questions, and then next week we might have two more, you know, like. People are gonna get fatigued and a little bit like, why are you wasting my time? This is expensive.
I mean, I wrote down, I think I'm up to fourteen questions. Um, so I I do think it's fair for us to. Put those out there and say, for the response, this is what we want in the email response. And when you pre and for the shortlist is presenting, these are the questions we're gonna be asking you to to come prepared for, just to your point. So there's no surprise that I think we're constantly just throwing things out there. There has to be an organizational process for. Why we're doing this.
Right.
And another one that comes to mind, not to pile on too much, is just historic context, like I didn't see anything. At least in the B F J proposal as to like defining historic houses. Like, one thing that I grew up in a town where we actually had a map and said. I remember it was on my kitchen wall. Like, these houses were built like before seventeen hundred. These houses were built between seventeen hundred and, you know, seventeen sixty. And there was basically. An index as to which houses were older and and which houses. And and so anyways, point being like. Given how that's hit us a couple of times in the last eighteen months between the library and now the Red Cross Building. I think historic inventory. Might come into play at some point.
So maybe ask them in the interview round to provide an example or examples of times where they. Helped towns come up with strategies to manage. Non-protected historical resources.
Yeah.
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 Okay, so, um. I guess what I have right now written down for questions that should be asked during the um email phase are, um. Okay, on, so I I have like ten fifteen questions, but. I guess I'm not sure which are best for the emails versus. What's best for.
So we can read all the questions and just say email or other if we want to do that.
Okay, so, um. Risks slash areas where you went more in depth. On in times that it went well or didn't go well. And then, um, piggyback on that, how is your approach to P O C Ds over the last ten to fifteen years changed?
So I like, if I had to choose between those two, I'd go with the second question. If if Chris agrees that we're all trying, we're getting to the same end with both answers. I think the second question is more clear. So. I would ask in the email round, how has your approach to P O C Ds changed over the last ten years?
Um, we agreed that the experience with legislator and political climate in Hartford would be a presentation question, um, identifying the costs more in depth. Especially with S L R breaking it down. And I think it was also identifying which person would be doing which task, if I remember.
And the rate.
The rate as well. So is that an email question? Or a presentation?
Email.
Okay, community outreach best practices.
Um. Yes, I have that, too. I'm just trying to think of where that would be better.
I think the email, they could probably cover it.
Yeah, I I would put that in the email.
If you had twenty five percent more budget, what would you do with it?
See, that I would maybe hold for the interview.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, define current workload, um. You know, based on staff, people who would be working on this project, what are they currently um, working on? Are they truly available to start second week of July?
That I would probably put in the email.
You know. Um, send their standard contract. Assume email.
Yeah.
And then best practices for implementation strategies. Presentation.
Presentation. Presentation.
Okay, and then I have. Two other things that I believe we agreed would be presentation, um. Data tables they have created for other P O C Ds to see how they've managed on piecemealing data, and then what we just discussed with historic resources.
Only reason I'd put the data. In the emails, because we're gonna get answers from three. And may help us get a better view.
No, no, I I. I agree. I can get some good ideas from everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be one, two, I think that's, um. I think that's five emails.
Six. I have six for the email.
Yeah, I can't count it. Six, yes.
Which I think is reasonable.
Yeah, I would imagine that would take just a few.
Yeah.
Three hours to. I mean, considering how much time they spent on these proposals, I think they'd appreciate the ability to kind of clarify these things, so.
Okay.
All right, so it sounds like we have some questions, and it sounds like we have a process laid out. Is there anything else anyone feels we need to cover or that's unclear?
Do you think we need to consult anyone else outside of this committee before selecting? I I don't think, I mean, it's great to have Chris's feedback, anyone else. That we need to.
In terms of selecting a consultant? I mean, I I think, Sarah, if there's anyone inside of town hall, which, you know, you speak with all those people every day, but you feel like you want their input from. I would encourage you to do that, but I don't think we have to get.
I don't think so.
Someone else's input. And I think, and like, again, any of the three consultants that we're sending these emails to. Could do a fine job on this. So, you know, as we work to refine it. I'm sure there'll be other voices that help us refine the scope of work, but in terms of selecting a consultant, I don't think it'll make a huge difference in who we go with.
Okay.
And all, as I said, I'll reach out to other towns that have recently worked with all of these firms to get their feedback. Because it may make the answer much clearer than we think.
Yeah. Okay. Um. Well, if there's no relational. Conversation on the consultants, um, is there any other business that may become before Sarah this evening? All right, um, then.
What are we gonna do for the next three hours?
We're gonna go home and have dinner. Uh, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. It's for Turner and Mr. Eric.